This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
I'd like to call the March 9, 2023 regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education Order at 6:30 PM. May I have a motion to approve the February 9, 2023 Board of Education Meeting Minutes?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education Student Rep Report.
So, not much today. On the academic side, the Future Problem Solving Group here at North Haven, those who qualified are preparing for the state tournament or state competition, which is going to be late this month. Hopefully, North Haven will qualify for the international competition for a second year in a row. Athletic side, most winter sports are coming to an end with spring sports starting in the coming weeks. And the North Haven Boys' Ice Hockey Team won the SEC Championships and are now currently competing in the playoffs. On the arts side, the school performance, Newsies had an excellent turnout, and basically it.
Okay. I know how many of the other board members were able to attend that play at all. It was spectacular. Really something to see. I was also able to attend a little bit of the senior night for hockey. That was a lot of fun, too. They're doing a great job and moving forward. Sure, if I let Ms. Peterson speak about it, I could be here for an extra hour. So, we'll pass on that for now, but we'll keep it in mind for next time. So, you're awesome if you got anything you have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Public comment for any non-agenda item? So, just as a reminder, if you guys have any questions about anything that's not on today's agenda, come on up, give me your name and your address, and you can head out.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Sally Buamey, Five Blossom Drive. Is this public comment for items not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Great, thank you. I just have two. One is financial. I'll do the financial one first. I just have a question about the reserve accounts, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted, before I ask my question, in your opinion, why do we have reserve accounts?
In my opinion, why do we have reserve accounts?
Yeah.
We explained all this at the meeting that we were both at at the Board of Finance, right?
Well, I mean, you have a reserve account for special ed, and I think that that's absolutely crucial, that we have a reserve account for special ed. Special ed is very fluid. It's hard to predict day-to-day how many special ed students there will be. And of course, it's always difficult to estimate and predict the state's reimbursement rate after the town meets its 18,000 threshold, so it might...
There has to be a particular fund that you're asking me about.
Right. Well, I just wondered generally, you know, why you thought reserve funds were important. I think they're important for to have...
Because things are fluid.
Right. And same for medical, for example, also incredibly necessary because claims history, claims change from year to year. But my question is regarding special ed legal fees. I notice, I think it's 330D is your account line for legal fees. And in this current 2223 budget, it was $200,000. And I just was wondering, you know, I get all the reports as a member of the Board of Selectmen that go to the Board of Finance. Why in July of 2022, which was the first month of the fiscal year, it had an expenditure of $24,926 for special ed legal fees? Had we already exhausted the $200,000 in the operating budget? To me, a reserve means you use it when you need it. It's like a rainy day fund, like when...
Apparently, we needed it.
So, what was... But the reports don't show... I mean, the September Board of Ed report showed your $200,000, 330D line at less than 1% used.
Correct. So, what happened was you have June expenses. They don't come in June. They come in July. Last year, the Board of Ed approved that we could use that reserve for legal fees. So, when we put it in...
Oh, I see. See, it doesn't make that clear here. It just says special ed legal fees, July 2023. So, that was a bill or invoice?
It was June's legal fees for special education.
The last month of the previous fiscal year?
Correct.
So, you didn't have it as an encumbrance in the 2122?
I don't know what it is in my head. It says bill of the month.
Okay. So, you got it. Well, that explains it. But you could, I hope you could understand why, for me, it seemed odd to see such a large amount come out the very first month of the year. But now that you're explaining, it was from a prior invoice at the end of fiscal...
It's a current invoice. Because we don't get the invoice till July for June's expenses.
Right.
So, if it goes over fiscal year, we don't know what those expenses are because we have no access to see what those are.
Okay. So, it was really a 2122 fiscal year expense paid in the first month of the 2223?
Using the reserve funds that we had put there.
And that's what you use the reserve funds for that rather than do encumbrances?
Well, I can't encumber something if I don't know. You can only approve something if you know what the expected expense is. That's the common principle.
Right.
So, if I don't know what the expenses, I can't approve one.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman and Howard, thank you. I hope you could understand why I was confused to see such a large amount come out of the reserve.
You can come here and ask any question while I'm here.
Thank you. You know, coming out of the first month of the reserve.
Yep.
And my final issue is, has to do with the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. They had their state convention in November, and the CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, advocated for a civility pledge. And that was done because, as you know, Mr. Chairman, sadly, there's been meetings, some Board of Ed meetings in other parts of the state that got out of hand, a little lack of civility, even some fisticuffs, I think, occurred. So, the CCM thought it would be a good idea to promote a civility pledge. And so, I had been thinking about this since I got notice of this back in December. But what really put it in the forefront of my mind was I attended the Board of Finance meeting in early February. It was the Board of Ed Budget Workshop, and I was in the audience, as I think you were, and I heard a rather nasty negative statement made from a person in the audience. And so, that kind of put it to the forefront of my mind. And so, at the March 2 Board of Selectmen meeting, I made a motion for the Board of Selectmen to adopt the pledge recommended by CCM. And the Board of Selectmen unanimously adopted the pledge. And so, I'm, oops, I'm here tonight to ask you if you would consider either tonight or another day, after you think about it, whether your board would like to adopt the pledge. It's only about 25 words. If I may approach, I'll just leave it with you with CCM's explanation of why they're doing it, and that's the pledge. It's very short.
Okay.
So, I just let you like to consider it as the Board of Selectmen did unanimously.
Okay. I'll redo it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak that? It doesn't matter what. I'll get everybody in. So, you know, however you want to do it.
Yeah. Hi. Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane. I want to first just shout out the cast and crew of Newsies. As Amanda said, we went and attended it last week, and it was phenomenal. It was an incredible achievement for everybody. My entire family went out, and it's just really a testament to the creative spirit and talent that we have within the North Haven Public Schools. Even my, you know, my son, who doesn't like getting dragged along to this, eventually wound up getting into it by the end. Sort of related to this, though, my daughter, who did a theater camp over the summer, was a little bit upset, and some of her friends were as well, that there wasn't a school play that was being held at the middle school this year. She does a couple of other clubs that take place there, the Sketch Club, the Gamers Club. Those are a little bit more, not that there's, you know, they're great clubs and they're totally engaging, but they're not as sort of collaborative. They're not really something that's like more of a long-term involved project that would be something like the school play or like, you know, sports. Unfortunately, she's not really into sports and stuff like that, so that's not really something that you would do. And I guess my question is sort of like, you know, my understanding is that there's been a little bit of difficulty in finding some faculty advisors and faculty sponsors that want to kind of be involved in some of this stuff that might have been kind of around during the pre-pandemic era. And the last thing I want to do is force our teachers to kind of overextend themselves when they've been kind of burnt down, they're running on fumes, and they're still doing an amazing job despite all that. But I wonder if there's just kind of like a long-term plan to sort of like make us whole again in terms of like getting us back to where we might be. And I don't know if that's going to involve like involving other members of the community who could be vetted to do these types of things, or if there, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of appetite for additional pay for some of the teachers for that, but I would be in favor of that if we could kind of, you know, encourage some of these other activities that are, you know, outside of sports that are...
For me, with the play, I would be kind of close to promiscuous, anything like that. I think because we're coming back from the pandemic, the teachers are so bogged down by trying to play catch-up and advance everything that they lost over the last couple of years that they don't have the time committed to give for that kind of play you're talking about. I mean, the time that these, I mean, let alone the teacher, the kids put in for that is, it's mind-boggling, really. So, I would imagine that in the future, as things start to level off again, it'll be more attractive for teachers to participate in that. But right now, I think they're just, you know, they're up to their nose, really, in everything that's going on and playing catch-up.
I totally understand that.
I don't want to say they lost interest. I think they lost time.
No. I, you know, I, if I were in their position, I would not be signing up for extracurriculars either, you know, especially without additional pay.
But the board encourages all that. You know, we encourage new sports. We encourage plays, art projects, field trips, you know, like that.
I think sort of my...
That's an excellent part of their overall growth in the school system.
Yeah. No, and I appreciate your perspective on this. I think just like one of my concerns is like these kids lost a lot during the pandemic, and some of them who have interests that are not, you know, the current ones that are being sort of funded or, you know, might be a little bit lighter in resources are sort of, they're still missing out on those things.
It's like the baseball has been around for 100 years.
Right.
It's going to be here for the next 100 years. I get it. If you're not participating in that, you're looking for those other avenues, and right now, some of them aren't.
Yeah. I think there's some creative thinking that can be done to bring some of those things about, bring them back, that maybe doesn't put strain on our teachers, but you know, I also don't...
If any others, we share.
I'd be happy to participate in brainstorming.
Sure. And I think going off the clubs, we talk about clubs a lot in curriculum and instruction, but Lynda, can you just give like an update on how, like if a student has an idea, that they are more than welcome to approach a teacher and create whatever club it is they want to?
Exactly. So, there's a proposal form. They either talk to an administrator in the building or a particular teacher that they want to be like the advisor to that club. And then they work that out, and then it comes through CNI, and we have never not approved a club that has come our way. I think for a little background on the play, too, I think a staff member who was a real integral part of that unfortunately was not able to do that this year due to some medical issues. So, that's a little bit of the stop on the middle school, I think.
It's applause.
Right. Applause. Exactly.
We are going to get creative and looking outside the ranks if needed, make sure that these students have these opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? No? You're good?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The resignation of Kathleen Dreschler, social studies teacher at the North Haven Middle School, and the resignation of Jennifer Forbes, the administrative assistant for athletics. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you hear from the parent reps today? We all had received the memorandum of understanding, rec with the Board of Finance. Seeing that everybody had the chance to review that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the North Haven Board of Education, North Haven Board of Finance Non-Lapsing Fund MOU. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can we have some discussion on that first?
Absolutely, we can.
Okay. So, I do have just a couple of quick questions, if that's okay.
Yes.
Howard, do you have a breakdown of funds that we sent back to the town, non-capital or non-other, non-lapsing fund dollars for the past few years?
So, for last year, it was about $75,000. Prior year, it was about $7,000. And the prior year before that, when it was my first year here, it was about, I believe it was about $20-something thousand dollars.
So, we've consistently sent money to our non-lapsing funds and back to the town?
So, the first, the only time, so that's one of the issues here is that what's a non-lapsing fund and what's not a non-lapsing fund, right? So, the only time the non-lapsing fund actual legislation has been utilized was my first year when I got here, and we sent 571,000, I can't get the numbers, $571,000 to the non-lapsing fund. We actually went through the process. The board voted on it. You all voted on it. There was actually wording that had to be said, had to be exactly what was, had to be voted on. And then the money moved, and the Board of Finance approved it, and it moved into the non-lapsing fund. I reported on that every month going forward as to what it was being utilized for. That went to both you and to the Board of Finance. So, that is the only time that a non-lapsing fund has been utilized. Our reserves, even as this MOU states, the medical reserve and the special education reserve are not considered non-lapsing funds. They are considered reserves. So, technically, the only time this is a hybrid is the Board of Education Capital Project Fund. That was a quasi-non-lapsing fund because we put funds into that in order to be able to work on the capital projects because, as I stated when I was at the Board of Finance meeting, the town does not fund capital projects for the Board of Ed. You all have to fund that through any surpluses that you have from the operating budget. And so, there was a handshake agreement between the town and the Board of Ed that any surpluses would go into that fund. And now, all they want to do with the MOU is now is to formalize that agreement, and that's what we're doing here.
Yeah. I was happy to see that the, is it an MOU or an MOA officially?
An MOU.
MOU establishes that funds transferred to medical and special education are not considered unexpended or surplus funds. So, like I feel like that hopefully will settle like a year-long semantic debate there. That's great. The document does state that the Board of Finance may deny any requests for funds that go to Fund 373, which is the non-lapsing fund. And I understand this is legal and in some cases completely appropriate. Based on the needs of the town and the Board of Ed respectively, I would just continue to ask for additional transparency on the side of the Board of Finance throughout the decision-making process. There's some really like esoteric nature of budgeting for a town and for a Board of Ed and a Board of Finance. So, I just want to read the specific referendum language and like talk about why I think it's important that, I like the MOU, the way that it's written, but I do think it's important that the Board of Finance lets the people who voted in the referendum understand why dollars would not go back to education. So, the referendum language states, "Shall the town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of X amount of dollars for the town government and Y amount of dollars for the Board of Education for a total amount of Z during the fiscal year, whatever fiscal year it is." And voters can vote yes or no. So, I think it's logical that some people might think, okay, so we approved $60 million for the Board of Education. If the Board of Finance says like, okay, that's fine, we've got $500,000 coming back to us from the Board of Education, we're going to send $250,000 to do additional brand-of-leaf pickup, which we all love, lovely leaf pickup. I think, and I feel strongly, that that should be communicated back to the voters who voted to appropriate that $60 million for educational purposes if that money will no longer be used as an educational purpose. So, the people voted to appropriate a very specific number of public dollars to the educational system, and if those dollars are legally going to be moved to non-educational function, I think that a press release should go out just for the sake of transparency. I think that we really try to be transparent with a good faith estimate that's provided to the Board of Finance in the form of a capital improvement plan that outlines five years of capital improvements upfront. And I would just like to ask that folks on the Board of Finance put out a press release, should this situation ever arise, because I'm sure that they wouldn't deny funds coming back to the education system if it wasn't for an important reason. So, let's just talk about it. Let's explain it, and let's make sure everyone is very clear on why.
Yeah, that'd be discussion, for sure. I mean, that would be almost a mandated discussion that we'd have to have as money goes back and forth with the Board of Finance at the time we either make the request or they make their decision on that request. So, yeah, I get exactly what you're saying. Anything else you want to add?
No, I think it's time we put this to bed, you know. I think we're good here.
I agree. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, move. Next, we need to approve the completion of the punch list for the middle school. So, the approval of the North Haven Middle School Renovate as New Academic Edition Project Number 1010047 has achieved its final completion, and all bills have been paid, punch lists has been completed, and the contract obligations fulfilled. So, I need to make a motion to approve that the North Haven Middle School Renovate as New and New Academic Edition Project 1010047 has complete and authorize the submission of the final grant application to the State of Connecticut Office of School Construction Grants and Review. Can I get a motion for that?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, move. Let me go to the report of standing committees. Marty's unavailable today, so we will not be reporting on ACES. We will do the curriculum instruction and planning. Alany?
Sure. So, we had a meeting this evening, and Nadia Gonzalez, who is the K-12 English Learner Department Coordinator, joined us for the discussion today, and she highlighted the number of English learners we have in the district, which is currently 170. And she spoke about the support that is given by our three district...
TESOL.
TESOL. TESOL teachers to meet their needs. She also highlighted some of the district's responsibilities to identify and annually assess our English learners. She did a really nice job. They're doing some great things with their family nights and, you know, making everybody feel welcome. So, it was really great to hear from her. And then we had a field trip proposal for Career and Technical, to go to the Career and Technical Education Department in New York City, and we approved this field trip, and that was for the high school students.
Awesome. So, with that, I'd like to get a motion to approve the North Haven High School Field Trip to New York City, the Garment District, and Wall Street on April 26, 2023. They'll have three teachers who'll be the escorts down there, so it won't be a free-for-all. So, can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
I'm just really glad we did this field trip. This is an awesome opportunity. I kind of want to go.
Sign up to be a chef?
No, I don't want to be a chaperone. I just want to go.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, move. We'll move on to the North Haven Education Foundation.
Thank you. So, I attended the NHEF meeting held yesterday. They continue to discuss and plan for their upcoming comedy night. It'll take place on Friday, April 28, at the Knights of Columbus Lodge in Hampden. I think it's on Wynn Ave. The comedians are said to be very, very funny, so the foundation is looking for a good turnout. And just please visit their website for more information. You can visit our website. We have a flyer up there as well. And just a plug for them, they're always looking for new board members if folks are interested. Thank you.
As far as policy goes, we need to do the first read of the following policies. Policy 5141.21, Administration of Student Medications in Schools. 5141.25, Management Plan and Guidelines for Students with Food Allergies, Lichen, Storage, Disease, and/or Diabetes. Policy 1545.4, Non-Discrimination Students. Policy 5145.8A, Policy Regarding Students, and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Series 4000 Personnel Policy, Emergency Action Plan for Interscholastic and Intramural Athletic Events. Series 4000 Personnel Policy. Next. Exert...
Exertional.
Yeah. Thank you. Exertional Heat Illness Awareness for Intramural and Interscholastic Athletics. I thought that was a mispronounced one.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to give a little summary on...
Yeah. I just want to kind of get through it and not let you hit a wall on one.
Okay. So, Policy 5141.21, the Student Medication Schools. This is an existing policy. It's just a revision. It's quite lengthy, if you've noticed already. But there are a few highlighted parts for the board to consider. And what I've, I've reached out to Mary Navidable. She is our district charge nurse, nursing coordinator, for her opinion that I will share with the board next month because I think it's important that a medical professional weigh in a little bit and provide us a little more information.
Can I ask a quick question about those two in particular, the 5141s?
Sure.
In the policies, it leaves a spot for either an administrator or a nurse to administer or kind of be in charge of this. Would that be our charge nurse who's on point for that? Would it be a specific administrator within a building, or is it a mix of both?
Mix of both.
Okay. Thank you.
The next one, the 5141.25, Management Plan for Guidelines for Students with Food Allergies. Also a revision. Policy is currently in place, but this one, this policy provides extra clarity around use of continuous blood glucose monitors in school. 5145, Non-Discrimination of Students. This is another revision, and this comes directly from our attorneys. Jen was speaking to our attorneys a bit ago, and noticed that our policy in place needs to be updated with a few new legislative additions. 5145.8, the section 504. So, back in July, the Office of Civil Rights released new guidance regarding supporting students with disabilities and avoiding the discriminatory use of discipline under the 504 Rehabilitation Act. So, this policy has been revised just to include that new guidance. The Series 4000 Policy, UC Series, it's usually a new policy because we don't have it in place yet. So, the Emergency Action Plan, this is a new policy which requires boards of education to develop and implement an emergency action plan for responding to serious and life-threatening sports-related injuries that occur during interscholastic or intramural events. This plan is already in place. This is just a policy to mandate the board to do so. Back in, I think it was October or September, Steve presented to the board and shared that action plan that Alany had played a part in as well. So, thank you, Lynda. And the last one, the Exertional Heat Illness Awareness, also a new policy, requires any person who holds a coaching permit issued by the State Board of Ed and who coaches interscholastic or intramural sports to complete an exertional heat awareness education program. We already do that with our coaches. And it will also require students and their parents to read the training materials, and this will be placed in the upcoming years. I think student ID or something, what it's called in the athletic, how they get all that information out. That'll be there next year.
The last two are state laws.
Correct.
We have to do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. So, people, we'll do that one. All right, so people, we'll do that one over with those again next month. Lenny, want to do the district calendar?
Sure. So we have met a bunch of times to go over the district calendar, so I'm just going to go over kind of the goals, the process, and then the outcome. And if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. So, this, this discussion started with, for, for a couple different reasons. So, you know, during our first meeting, we developed our goals. The, the first one was really to look at the calendar to ensure kind of consistency in days and to avoid any, like, interruptions where there's like one day off here, one day off here, to try to make it a little more consistent for students and teachers to fall into a routine. The second goal was to look at globally, kind of, our student population and understand special observances and things of that nature, so we can make sure that all of our students are able to, you know, make adjustments in their school day if needed. And the last one is, we talk about air conditioning all the time, and how the middle of June starts to get pretty hot, especially for our elementary-age students, so we were trying to look at the calendar to see what we could do to balance all of this. So the process, we looked at a bunch of different angles. Joyce was an angel, and she reworked that calendar for us five or six times. Every time we asked her, can you try this, can you try this, can we look at that? So we did meet five or six times, and the, you know, we really took into consideration, we tried to be very mindful of the working parent, of working parents, and, you know, that consistency and flow of the school year. We spoke with and gathered information from Patrick Lawrence and the Diversity Club and the Diversity Teams, and gathered the info on those special observance days. We kind of went back and forth on the days off, should they be there, should they not be there? We kept the days off that we currently have, we kept them for continuing. And the outcome, you all have a copy of the calendar, the outcome was that we were able to, considering all of this, we were able to shorten the school year, not by taking days out, but just by moving the start date up, so it's kind of a full week. And the, even if we were to have snow days, I think we were like counting them on our fingers to make sure it wouldn't hit a full week, you know, the students would still be getting out even with three snow days, you know, before the 14th-ish of June, I think, somewhere around there off the top of my head. So, we also, which was really, really great, and I thought we all worked really well together, you know, we were able to outline special observance days for students of varying cultures and religions, so that they could, they're on the calendar, we, we can see what they are, we can use it as a learning opportunity. But also, students who want to miss a day or need to miss a day because of cultural reasons or religious reasons don't have to feel like, oh, I can't skip, I can't skip. It's not really a skip school now, we, we know it's a special observance day, and that these, you know, this certain population may be out for X, Y, and Z reason, and that's 100% fine. So just a quick thank you to Goldie Thais, Joyce, Patrick, and Melinda for reworking this calendar a million times.
Yeah, I second that, I know that's not an easy job, so it's appreciated. May I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 district calendar and the special observance days?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So for the special observance days, do those count towards a student's total absences that would be considered, like, with truancy and stuff like that?
Yep, so we looked at the state policies, and we talked about that a lot, so can I answer that question? So we looked at the state laws around that, and although it has to count as an absence because the student isn't physically in school, it's an excused absence, and it actually won't count against the truancy numbers.
Love that, okay, that's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, it's something, we're also going to, we're going to look to make, ensure that there are not any extracurricular activities in the afternoon that students may be missing, or work with the teachers to ensure that there's not
Major tests.
Major tests or something along those lines. So we're considering those students missing class.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Similar to last month, the, the board approved a donation from Impression Studio for the middle school, I think it was around $3,400 or so, or they made a similar donation to the middle school. So I just have that as a potential approval, anything over $500 needs to go before the board. And the, these funds go in the student assistance account if there's things a student needs at the high school, we have the funds to help support them.
So may I have a motion to approve a donation from Impression Studio, $3,224 for North Haven High School Photo Day?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Moving on to this year's calendar. So as it stands today, the last day of school is scheduled for June 20th, it's a Tuesday. Two days of school were canceled due to the funerals for Lieutenant DeMonte and firefighter works, and a third day was canceled just recently because of inclement weather. And just to know, Monday, June 19th, there's no school due to recognition of Juneteenth, so that leaves the last day, Tuesday, June 20th. So I'm proposing to the board that we potentially could eliminate one day from the school year. The board always schedules 181 days, the state mandates 180. Barring any snow, we could get out on Friday, June 16th, and that would be kind of perfect for graduation, the end of school year, and not going into that next week. But, obviously, we can discuss that, but it's just a proposal. Thank you.
Hearing that, may I have a motion to approve a reduction of one school day, totaling 180 school days to the school calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Kind of open it up for discussion in case somebody has a question for, yeah?
I do have a question. So I know we don't like to do graduation on a Friday, so would we be looking, I know we're not talking about graduation now, but we would probably be looking maybe a couple days earlier?
I think the earliest would be a Thursday. I think just recently we did it on a Friday. Dr. Dadlike does like to stay away from that though, so we wouldn't go much earlier than a Thursday if we get out on a Friday.
Great, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there one more thing if you don't mind?
All right.
Thank you. So as I mentioned a few months ago, an evacuation drill is tentatively going to be conducted at Monoise Elementary School. The evacuation drill was a little different than we've done in the past. This type of drill would take students from Monoise Elementary School and bring them to another location. And the reason for doing this is, if there's a gas leak or there's a chemical spill, that we need to remove students and staff from the, from the campus. So I've been working with Chief Paul around that, and we've scheduled a, a date of May 18th at 9:00 AM at Monoise to conduct that drill. Chief Paul was nice enough to accompany me to the Monoise Faculty Meeting on Monday, that we shared it with teachers. And I will be also talking with Ms. Renetta to attend a PTA meeting to help, you know, go through questions with parents and, and, you know, help, help further this communication along, because they're not going to be the only school that does this. The goal is to get this through all six of their schools. So if there's any questions around that before.
Do we have a couple?
Sure.
From a communications perspective, are we asking parents to acknowledge that they have received this communication, that their child is going to be?
So it's a field trip. They have to sign off like a permission, permission slip. So if parents do not choose to send their, their children on evacuation drill trip, they will stay back at school.
Okay. Cool.
Anytime we take students off the campus, barring an emergency, we need credit permission. May 18th.
I know one of the other concerns that we had originally was you're planning to do it only one year.
One this year, potentially. It is requiring a lot of planning on the board, the board side as well as the Chief Paul's side, because he's also, has the PD and the CERT team involved, because road closures and making sure that, we really want to set this up appropriately with actually staging areas to have parents pretend to pick up their students if they're available at that time, that we could practice all that. So, we're going to see how this drill goes, and maybe we would try one for the end of this year, but the goal is to really continue throughout next year and not just do more.
Do you have the location slot there as to where you're going to?
So we're going to take them to Linsley Street. So kindergarten through second grade will be escorted into the library, and grades three through five will be escorted into the Recreation Center, and, you know, obviously supervised throughout attendance taken numerous times to make sure that everyone, no different than a field trip to New York City, but we just have little babies coming with us this time, so.
Anyone else? Okay, Assistant Superintendent's report.
Okay, great. Could you look up that, Howard, if you don't mind? Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to share some information regarding advanced placement and dual enrollment classes that we have at the high school. First, I'd like to thank Amy Alessi, our K-12 Career and Tech Ed Coordinator, and Anthony Mastriano, our Coordinator of Student Services, for helping me pull this together. So over the past couple of years, I know as we report out on CNI, we keep talking about these new courses that we're bringing, and I thought that this might be a good opportunity to kind of explain the differences between them, and that people would start to understand what we're offering to our students at the high school level. So, we have been working very strategically across all departments to increase our college-bearing credit opportunities. And we look at that from a couple of lenses. Obviously, from the lens of students who are on a college trajectory, but also from the lens of students who are looking for a trade or a career pathway. So if you remember, last month, Patrick and I talked about the accountability reports, and within that, we talked about, there's scores or points that you achieve by the number of college-bearing credit courses that are offered. So this kind of ties in with that. So there are two paths for obtaining college credit at the high school level, and these include AP or Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment Courses. So I'm going to spend a couple minutes just highlighting the differences for you. AP or Advanced Placement are courses that are designed by the College Board. So the College Board provides the training for teachers, and there is an end-of-course exam that students take. And depending on how students score on that end-of-year exam, if they get a four or a five, coupled with the higher education institution that they're going to attend, accepting those credits, then they can receive college credit for that. It's not a given, though, because the, the college that the student is going to makes that determination. So, here is a listing of the Advanced Placement courses that we offer currently at the high school. Now, every year, we don't necessarily offer all of these because they're contingent upon student interest and enrollment. So sometimes they fill, sometimes they're on a rotation, but we have a nice range of courses. You could flip to the next one if you don't mind, Howard? The next is Dual Enrollment, and that's a little bit different. The Dual Enrollment Partnership is an agreement that exists between the district and a university or college. So our teachers have to go through a process, and they're actually vetted by that higher education institution, and they're like an adjunct perfecter, actually. And we get syllabus, syllabi from the university, and we do have some planning liberties within that, but the student is actually duly enrolled. They're getting credit here at North Haven High School, and then they're getting credit at the university. And so, when they leave or when they finish that course, they actually have a transcript from whatever university we were partnered with. Doesn't mean they're going to go to that university necessarily, but when they look at their undergraduate transcript, they'll have a separate one, say if they're taking from ECE Yukon courses, they'll have a Yukon transcript even if they attend Southern or Brown or wherever. They will have an extra transcript. Here is a listing of the partnerships that we currently have. The first one is the Connecticut State Colleges and Universities. They have changed their name to encompass all of the community colleges. We were affiliated with Gateway in the past, but now it's under that new umbrella. We have a partnership with Quinnipiac, University of Bridgeport, and the University of Connecticut. Each year, we renew our agreements with each, with each of these institutions. Now, as you can see on our current offerings, we have a whole plethora of them for our, our dual enrollments. And these range from math to science to business, photography, the arts, culinary. And we even have one that's like an entry-level mathematics, so that students who maybe wouldn't place into college math are able to do this in high school, so that they're able to just get started right away without having to take any non-credit-bearing mathematics classes at the college level. And it's really a very affordable way for getting some college credits. And this isn't, doesn't encompass all of them, but if you look at Yukon ECE, it's $50 a credit, as opposed to what you would be paying if you were taking it as an undergraduate, so it's 150 for the full course. APs are $97 to take the exam at the end of a course. We make sure that any student who wants to participate regardless of financial need, we take care of that. And we're in an affiliation right now with Goodwin University around different initiatives in the state around career pathways and manufacturing. But one of the pieces that I learned last month was that there is legislation that's currently proposed to absorb all of these costs for all schools in Connecticut for students to access these higher-level college opportunities. Any questions on any of that? Yes?
So when can the AP courses be taken, like junior year, senior year?
There are some even sophomore-year classes. They're outlined, and our wonderful school counseling department really works with students as they're planning their trajectory, beginning right at freshman year, to get them on the pathway to be able to say like, okay, you may have interest in these particular courses, we know we're going to be offering them then, and, and help them outline that.
You already answered the paying for dual enrollment. And can you post that, those lists on the website?
We certainly can.
And then the col- the Connecticut State Colleges and Universities, you mentioned, it's Gateway, is it just Gateway right now?
It's, it's all of them. We are affiliated with Gateway here, but it could be Tungstis, they've, they've just created an umbrella for all of them.
So it's the, can I get, the community colleges? Or would it include Southern, Central, Eastern?
I believe it does include Southern and Central and Eastern and Western at this point.
So if there was a course, a student, like if there was a course a student wanted to take at Southern, let's say, would they be able to do that dual enrollment, or we have to first make an affiliation?
We have to make the articulation agreement. So that's what sets it in play, is we have this agreement with them.
Okay.
Amanda?
Thanks. Can you, is there any cost to the district for the dual enrollment?
No, not an upfront cost. I mean, there's a human capital, certainly. So it's, it's a lot of work to get these articulation agreements going, and we have to really be vetted by whatever the institution is. And even for AP, there's a huge human capital as well. The teachers participate in a minimum of a five-day training, usually during the summer, to learn the curricula for whatever AP course and, you know, get themselves ready. So, there's not, we're not paying these universities to, to go into this agreement, but we're spending a lot of time making that happen.
This is a tremendous benefit to students, like from a financial perspective, you know, when you're looking at credits costing thousands of dollars each, and you, and we're getting them at such a discount, that's wonderful.
And I think the other benefit that, besides even that, is that our students are having first opportunities to follow their passions, but they're also having the experience of being able to really try out the rigors of college coursework too, so that it's not as shocking for them when they are freshmen in, in a different setting.
Yeah. Is there a limit to how many a student can take?
You know, our counseling department really does want students to have a balanced schedule, right? And we want to make sure that they're, you know, not biting off more than they can chew and, but nope, as long as your schedule can kind of fit different classes, there's obviously core requirements that we need to have, like four years of English and, and other, you know, graduation requirements that take precedent and fill up student schedules. But they really have a lot of opportunity to dabble in different things, and we have been super cognizant about having all types of interests, and not just having heavy academic courses like, you know, AP CAM. We want to make sure that we have photography, and we have studio arts, and, you know, all different areas. So I think that is a really comprehensive list.
Yeah, definitely. Have we heard about anybody having an issue transferring credits to their school of choice, should they choose? should they choose to go on to a college or university?
We really haven't. The APs are the trickier of them because it really is higher institution-dependent on whether they will accept it or not. So in some colleges or universities will say, we will only accept maybe one AP or two APs. That just varies by the university. But once you have the transcript of the dual enrollment, that is a part, you're always carrying that transcript with you. And that's actually something we caution students about, too, because you want to really take that seriously, because then that transcript follows you and becomes part of your college GPA as well. So there's a lot to balance in that.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm Taeisee.
Thank you. Grab, I'm sitting next to you, I'm getting all the data questions. So it would be great to kind of track like what the take-up rate is from the universities that our students are attending, both for AP as well as the dual enrollment. I think it'll just be good data to have. The other question I had was as it relates to enrollment. So how many of our students are currently, or what percentage of our students are enrolling in these programs?
I can't get that data from you from our counseling department, because they keep all of that.
That's great. I love seeing, without my glasses, automotive up there, as well as the business courses. So it's a really diverse mix of courses.
And I just feel like we've been talking about it for so many months, and you hear it one at a time, one at a time, and I just thought, like, pulling it together really highlights all that's offered.
It is amazing.
And I'm just gonna, can you flip again for me, Howard? These are just two odds and ends from World Language that I wanted to follow up from our October meeting, when I had shared with you about the SEAL of Bilingual literacy. So we offered this test for the first time to grade 12 students. 14 students participated, and in April we will be offering it again in grades 11 and 12, and to our English learners who are interested. So probably by June, or certainly in the fall, I'll be able to give you some data on how many students pass, what different languages we have had represented. But it's a really nice opportunity for students as well. And as we've been growing our Chinese program, if you recall, we've brought it to eighth grade this, seventh grade this year, we'll bring it to eighth grade next year, and then we will carry it all the way up through the high school. We have just received notification after applying that we will have a Chinese Honor Society starting this year, and so that will join our French, Italian, Latin, and Spanish Honor Societies. So that's a really cool opportunity for students as well. And on a totally different note, and I don't have a slide for this, but it's just informational, our grade 11 students will be taking the SAT on March 22nd or 23rd. A communication regarding this will be sent home by the high school administration, and we are heading into spring state testing time, so we will be having next-generation science testing as well as S-Back testing, and each school will be sending home communication to families around their individual testing schedules. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Janice, Director of Student Services, report.
I don't have a report.
Director of Finance, Operations, and Human Resources.
Sure. Thank you. Although spending continues to trend to the budget and in line with last year, we are beginning to see some stress on the specific budget lines due to the inflationary pressures on pricing for commodities like topi paper, cleaning, and maintenance supplies. I just wanted to bring this up just to let you know that this is, this is starting to hit the budget. We are starting to see that, and so then we are just going to monitor it as we go forward through the rest of the year. And also to let you know that you probably, if these lines do go over budget, we probably will have to make transfers to cover those lines from other line items that are under budget. So just wanted to give you that heads up on that respect. I've concluded the monthly transfer report, so I'll stop here. So to ask if we have questions about the first statement about the budget or about the transfers.
So I do have a couple of questions here for the budget. We're estimating about $7,247 left in the capital projects bucket after the encumbrances. So do those encumbrances account for some of the high-priority budget items that we included with our budget proposal for '23, '24 fiscal year to the Board of Finance?
They do that.
And I love the budget reports that you send, they're wonderful. They used to encumber for things like salaries and things like that, so I had a little bit of an easier time tracking to the total budget number. So do you know how we're tracking to that overall budget number?
So, right now, part of the problem is when we moved away from using UNIS as our payroll process and using it as our payroll processor, that took away the ability to actually encumber in an easy manner, because it automatically happened when you did it. So when we moved to Paycom, that was the, that we couldn't, it becomes a very manual-intensive process to be able to encumber. I'm working on a process to get that for you for next month, so that you will have a budget that shows what the remaining payroll would be, and so we would see the entire budget and what it looks like at this point in time, and where we are, what would be available projection based on your.
Well, I mean, you itemize line items for us. You tell us where we're tracking, and we can see, like, if we're tracking over or under 100%, minus, like, but the encumbered stuff for the salaries is the biggest chunk of the budget. So I think that would be really helpful. Do you have an estimation on how much we may have left for capital projects? Just because I think we have like 120,000-ish, is that right? In like high priority capital items?
Yes.
Yeah.
So yeah, right now I don't. That's what I'm going to try and have for you next month, I just don't have that right now, because I'm actually going through line by line on the salary lines to be sure that what we have there currently is what is going, what's going to be paid out versus each of the lines. So I'm actually having my team do that right now. So that's why I'm saying I'll have it for you next month.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. I do see that the medical reserves are being drawn down a little bit with anticipated further drawdowns in both medical and special education reserves. That makes me a little worried, just because we also have the volatility in the goods market, the paper, custodial, maintenance supplies, all that good stuff. Are we at all concerned that the drawdown in our medical reserves combined with some volatility in the goods market is going to put us in a bad position for the budget that we've just submitted to the Board of Finance?
So what I did was I actually did a projection going forward, this one I do have a number for. So right now we're at 120% of that midpoint that we're always looking for. I actually took the claims that we had that occurred over the balance of the year last year and used that as my proxy going forward. And so where it projects to end up is at 92% of the midpoint, or 118% of the minimum, right? So we're still above the minimum by a good number, and we're only a little bit below the midpoint that we always target. So I think we're in good shape for the medical claims if they come in as we, as last year came in, which is about 750,000 a month going forward on average through the rest of the balance of the year. So I think, I'm not concerned with it at this point. I do think it bears monitoring very closely, but I'm not concerned with it at this point in time.
I'm concerned with like the volatility in the market for like things like fuel costs, electric costs, cost of goods, et cetera. But if you're telling me that like we're watching it closely, we're going to talk about it, that's great. The report that we get monthly, is that the same report that gets sent to the Board of Finance, or is there a separate report?
No, that's the exact same report. They get, the entire package that I send out gets sent over to the Board of Finance.
Okay, great. One more question, just really quickly. Is, are any PTA funds going into the capital reserve fund?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Just from an operational perspective, cafeteria, free meals have been reinstated as of March 1st, and will run the balance of the school year. We're going to talk about the MOU. Reserve accounts, as we already talked about, we have 2.7 million in the medical, it's 120% of the mid-year. workers' comp is 670,000. SPED fund, as we continue to utilize that for legal fees, is 178,650. And capital projects, as we talked about, right now is 95,000, but with the, at this, when I wrote this report, it was 7,000, but actually, one of the items that I have in there for $60,000 is actually coming in at $51,000. So it's an extra 9,000, so we're going to be around 16,000 right now here, so we got picked up 9,000 there. So it's a little higher than we initially, we thought about, so. Grants, want to talk about, there's no change in the grants overall except the excess cost grant, which was an interesting, I just found this out yesterday. We, the new law passed, and so that 70% that we budget, that we always budget at, because that was the lowest point the state could ever fund us at, has actually moved up to 85%. But you, I found out that you only get the 85% if the appropriation from the state covers every district's expenses. And this year I was told it's not going to do that, so we're not going to get 85%. We're going to get some number lower than 85%. I don't know what that, they weren't able to tell me that number, so all I know, all I can tell you right now is that it's higher than 70, but less than 85. And so, but it's still more than, so it's still going to be more than 70, I just don't know how much more, which will then benefit us on the side of, on the operating budget, because we'll be able to, we only, again, we budget at a 70% number, and so that's going to give us a little extra buffer there when it comes to the operating budget.
Do they apply that cut evenly across all the districts, or is it tiered based on?
It's based on each of those three tiers, and so the more needy districts will get more of the, it's a proportion of a proportion. It's really, it's interesting, because they're only giving us a proportion of the 100%, and then they're going to give us a proportion of that, so. But that's just the way it works. And then there's only one other item I just want to mention, just because we always talk about the North Haven Educational Foundation. I just want to, I'm going to start updating how much they give us, because I track that. And so this year alone, they've given us 25, $25.7 thousand in grants to teachers to utilize to, when they, when they ask for money for different projects. So I just, and if you ever want a list, I can provide a list to the board of what those projects exactly are and how much they were given.
That's really great. The Education Foundation also just recently provided folders for our special education PTA, too. Just a wonderful organization, I appreciate all they do for us.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report included the recommended transfers?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that at all? What's that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Portions for public comment on any of the agenda items that we spoke about today?
Scott Friedman, 17, Cooper Road. I just want to give significant thanks to the calendar committee. Taeisee had given me an update yesterday, and just appreciate both sort of the respect for the heat that might come in June, as well as avoidance of testing and extracurriculars on days that may not be a school day off, so really appreciate that. Love the AP and Dual Enrollment Classes, that's just, the mix of courses is spectacular. As far as, ah, something that isn't quite on the agenda that I probably would have talked about earlier, I would really like to see a presentation from Patrick Lawrence, the Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator, at either the next Board of Ed meeting or one very soon. It's something we've been asking for, for quite a while now, way before. And I also just want to give a spectacular thanks to the North Haven Nighthawks mural that's been painted up there, because did a lot of work on making the change to the mascot, and it's lovely to see it in full glory. Thank you so much.
Here we are. Yeah?
Hi, Lori Mancer, 60, Tennyson Avenue. I have a few things. So the dual enrollment, so one of the things that you guys had mentioned on the list was that, you know, seniors could potentially, or whenever, take a dual enrollment, like math remedial class, that they think they wouldn't necessarily pass in, you know, in college, so kind of get ahead of that. So that counts as credit towards a math class for graduation, and they would get the credit in college as well. And now does that actually, so if the student has an IEP or a 504, is that supported in that classroom?
The accommodations.
Yes, so the accommodations. Because I mean, normally our accommodations follow them to college, right? But I wasn't sure if the agreement was that the support can happen in that classroom as well.
In the, I'm sorry, the teachers are teachers, too.
Yes.
One of our math teachers.
Just to clarify, right? Because I need options, right? And then, I am a mom of a 2020 graduate who has taken AP and the Dual Enrollment Classes, so as a mom of a child who's taken those classes, all of them have transferred into the colleges that she chose to go to, which was very helpful financially for us.
Where did she go?
So she went two years to Merrimack in Massachusetts, and now she's back home at UNH, going on to a law track, so. One other, well, I have a couple other things. It's great that you're supporting, you know, not just doing secondary education, you know, higher education. We are saying there are some kids that actually, that's not their track, right? We need mechanics, we need plumbers, we need manufacturing. One of the things that wasn't mentioned, in, by the year 2030, we are going to be short over 200,000 nurses in this country. What is North Haven doing to support getting that message, right? I think our kids are seeing what nurses do on TV, and that's not what nurses do.
So that's a kind of question, actually. Was it, maybe two months ago, we proposed at our curriculum and instruction group, we're starting a CNA track, which is going into play in the fall. So that's our first step, and we actually talked a lot about healthcare professions and tracks that we have at high school, so.
And I would just like to extend myself. If that CNA class would like a guest speaker, I am more than happy, I am an RN. I would love to come in and just discuss what I've done throughout my career and education-wise. You know, I think it's very important, we're having a problem, findings, you know, we can't graduate enough nurses to fill those spots. So, you know, I would love to do that. One last thing, Amanda was talking about, like, the money that was left over. You know, we have, you know, we're, you know, we have $200,000 left over, the town takes back 100,000, will give you, you know, the remaining money. Just an idea out there, right? There are certain things in the world kids should never worry about, one of the things is being food. They should never wonder where their food is, and it doesn't matter if you sit in North Haven, Connecticut, or if you're in New Haven, Connecticut, right? All kids have the right to have food, you know, full bellies make them more productive in a classroom, right? So I was wondering if, just an idea, if we can really find a way, you know, even run some numbers, see exactly how much it would really cost to feed every kid in this district breakfast and lunch, and if we have those funds that are left over, that's a great idea of where we can use those funds.
Will we extend it last, how long will we extend that for, and how much goes out?
We did for the month of December, and it cost us $91,000.
Right. So it's, call it 100,000 for easy math a month to do that. And I know the board's on record saying that if we had the money to do that, we would do that. It was funny, because we were just talking about it before the meeting even started.
Right.
That exact same thing.
Can I just interrupt? Just because you're not, because the number, right? So it's probably closer on average to about 125 to 145,000 a month.
Because we were short.
Because December was a short month, right?
Right.
Because of the holidays. So I just, it's, and again, the largest, at any one point, we had a million dollars last, two years ago, when we had the million dollars overage, right? But again, it's a good idea. I'm just, it's just, it's another option.
Yeah, it's a good idea, it's just a little difficult to implement, especially the way things are right now, but we're.
Right, and if that's food, right, that number just.
We'd definitely consider that without a second's call.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
So, Melinda, you mentioned earlier that we have a partnership with Goodwin College, and I believe they have a nursing program there. Is that an opportunity for us to expand our partnership with them in that sense?
So the CNA program actually is through the Department of Health, so we work in unison with them. It would be, the CNA would be the CNA regardless of where you took it.
No, I was just asking, just maybe, just another option in addition to, you know, just expanding that partnership.
Right, and we have some health career pathways and ECE health courses to, around healthcare. So I don't know if Goodwin would let us join into their CNA program, because it's very site-specific. You have to, like, create the learning environment with hospital beds and all of that. So it has to happen here, as opposed to, it's us reporting to the Department of Public Health, not a university, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering if we could just, if we could just use that as an opportunity to, even through the state, right?
Associates, right.
Is just still, like, make that one of the field trips, right? To get to that career pathing in terms of, so that's something to consider.
Yeah, I'll try and see what the options are.
Can I, so I just want to say something about the dual enrollment and the ECE credits. I think it's something like 88% transferable, so most colleges are going to transfer that, but just in case, sometimes transfer equivalencies at certain institutions are different, so would it be anything that has to do with here, it would be with that institution taking the credit. But they are 88%, I think, is the number transferable. But they are 88%, I think is the number transferable.
And they still have the transcript of the affiliated course.
Any other questions? Anybody else from the floor? Yeah, come on.
Yes, Sally Boyme, still at Five Blossom Drive.
You're still there?
Yes, sir.
From a half hour ago?
It's a, it's a little hard for me to hear back there, but I, I had a question about near the end of your meeting, Ms. Gabriel, I think asked a question about PTA funding and whether it's in the BOE capital. What, can you repeat your question? Because I couldn't hear it.
I asked if PTA funds are included in our capital line items.
Okay. Oh, your capital line item?
Yeah.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay, because from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, we get what are called special funds reports every month and then we get a year-end report. It's called the Special Funds Report. And on there, it has the BOE capital fund. And the year-end report dated June 30th of 2022, which would have been the year-end for the '21, '22 fiscal year, showed $292,000 from PTA funds into the Board of Ed capital. I'll, Ms., I will send you the report. We could only go by the reports that are generated, just as you Board of Ed members rely on reports from your finance office or director, we have to rely on reports that we receive. So Mr. Stirk, I will send you that year-end report that shows 292,000 of PTA funding going into the Board of, this is, it may be two separate funds.
Can I answer that question?
Sure.
That, it's not 292,000. PTA funds were put into there as one exception because they paid for, they paid for a portion. I think it was only, I want to say it was 19. I don't know the exact number. I will get you that number, but it was a combination of three things that went into there because it paid, paid for the Green Acres Playground. They, they contributed some money towards that. The rest of the money came from our funds that were already into there. So they didn't go into, it didn't go into the, into our capital fund. It was used to pay for a playground app that also had capital.
Okay, you say our, you mean the.
The Board of Ed's.
Is that different from, are you familiar with the?
So you're, you're, you're talking the semantics of the report that I provided to the Board of Finance, which is, I understand what you're saying.
No, no, this is a, this is a report generated by the finance office at Town Hall, not, it's not generated.
Right, so that's the way they worded it. In their, in their, in their UNIS general ledger, that's how they worded it, but it wasn't 292,000 from the PTA. PTA doesn't have that much money.
Okay. Well, I'll send it to you anyway because.
I have, I can show you.
It's not a UNIS, it's not a UNIS document, it's just a typed one-page document and it said, a year-end report.
Yeah, if you can send that, then Howard can review it and.
Again, we can only go by what we're given and it showed 292,000.
It sounds like we need better definitions as to what's.
Yeah, and so perhaps we're talking about two different things, maybe, so you do know what I'm talking about.
I'm pretty sure I know exactly how they got there, that they, I think they exactly copied my description of what I put into my report and they took it, they took it literally as opposed to what I was trying to explain in that report. So perhaps I did a bad job of explaining it.
Okay. Well, I will send it, I'll send the year-end report to both Superintendent Stirk and to you, Howard, because you and I always work well together and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the floor? Okay. Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Even need to stand up. I assume this is the case, but the ad hoc calendar, is that going to be made available to the public like alongside the regular academic calendar?
As soon as it's approved by the board.
Okay.
Anybody else? With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the March 9, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.